First time for everything.
There is, there'll be a lot of firsts for the next couple of months.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got, I mean.
How are you?
I got extra copies.
Okay. All set, folks?
Yes.
All right. Before our meeting this evening, we will have an invocation offered by Mr. Lockhart.
I ask for blessings as we gather today to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. May we use our resources wisely and well to represent all members of our community fairly. On this eve of our bicentennial and this city's first meeting of 2016, may we recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and our community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well.
Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well said, Commissioner Lockhart. You might keep that job.
Thank you.
Scrissler, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Commissioners, before we begin the regular aspects of our meeting, we have an organizational meeting, and I will chair this portion of the meeting as the last president of the commission. And the floor is open for nominations to the president of the commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I would like to nominate Dennis Murray for president of the commission.
I'd like, I'd like to second that.
Are there other nominations for the president of the commission? If not, then as the chair, I will declare those nominations closed. Mr. Heiburger, do we take a vote after both nominations for the president and vice president?
You can, I prefer you do it now.
Do now, okay. Mr. Scrissler, would you pass, do we have ballots available? I think you indicated there'd be ballots available.
There's only one.
There's only one person.
There's only one person, so, okay.
So it's just a motion, you have a second, so it's just a matter of voting on the motion.
Okay, all right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and I thank you again for the opportunity to hold the gamble. The chair will entertain motions for vice president of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Poole.
Is there a second?
Not required.
Oh, you're correct. Thank you for that. Are there any other nominations for vice president? I will nominate Richard Brady for vice president. Are there any other nominations? Then I declare the nominations closed and would ask that the ballots be prepared and distributed.
Mr. President?
Mr. Scrissler.
Mr. Brady will be the vice president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it for the public portion, or the organizational portion of the meeting. Mr. Heiburger, anything else? Okay, all right. Before we begin our regular meeting, I would ask for a moment of silence in honor of George Mylander, truly one of the great commissioners of this city, and a man affectionately known as Mr. Sandusky. Thank you. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of December 28, 2015. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the December 28, 2015 meeting and dispense the formal reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second. Discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We will turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our agenda items, please step to the microphone. It is interesting, looking at our agenda items tonight, it's a process of building up and tearing down. Those are the, that seems to sum up what we have on the agenda tonight. Mr. Johnson.
Is this working?
Got to turn my mic on.
Is this working?
Thank you. Since the comprehensive plan is up for a second vote here, I would like to comment on that. I've had a chance to look it over. I don't endorse what's going to happen on this site here with hotel and condos, but setting that aside, I have some concerns here. The hotel has 100 rooms with at least four floors or more. I don't know how you're going to fill up the hotel. I'm concerned about that because there's no events down here. Maybe the city's not telling us everything. I don't know. I guess we'll be surprised. Condos, there are six clusters, accounted six clusters of condos, at least four floors, retail on the bottom. When I first looked at this, I thought it looked like a gated community without the fence and the carded gate. I'm afraid that these condos will turn into rentals like the Chesapeake. They couldn't get those for homeownership, so they ended up renting them out to vacationers, weekly, monthly, like another motel. So that's going to probably be in competition with the hotel. It looks like another downtown with all the retail on the bottom of the condos, and we haven't even completed the original downtown yet. So I think that may be competing with downtown. Battery Park, we have an amphitheater. I don't know how many people that theater's going to hold, but we already have one over in the Marina, so now we're going to have two of them. I believe there's going to be a parking problem down there for that because your consultant already admitted that there's not going to be enough parking. They'll have to walk 10 minutes or more, or park in the streets. It looks like the condos, the hotel, and the retail is taking up all the parking. So you have to consider disabled people. A lot of elderly people come down here. What are you going to do with that? The Pavilion. I've heard this as a passive park with tennis courts and volleyball courts. And I heard from a commissioner that the tennis courts and volleyball courts was a selling point for the condos. I could care less if this was a selling point for the condos. Looks like a glorified dog park. The selling, as for the, no, there are no park benches, no picnic tables or shelters that I saw in there for Battery Park or the Pavilion. And last but not least is the Jackson Street Pier. The Jackson Street Pier looks like it's going to be a complete park. You're taking all the parking away there. A lot of people go down there. They fish off their truck there. They pull their truck up there with their fishing gear. They fish. A lot of people go down there, have their lunch. And there are three boat lines down there that need this parking. Three boat lines. I don't know how all that's going to work, but those are just some things that I'm going to throw out there that you need to look at, and that's going to be one big fight down there at that Jackson Street Pier because a lot of people go down there and they enjoy themselves. They can get right up close and personal with the water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else wishing to address the commission on any of the agenda items this evening?
Lance Warner, 1421 Columbus Avenue. I'd like to speak in support of the plan. We've had several plans in the past, and the difference between those and this one can be the execution. There's a saying in the military that a poor plan, well executed, is far superior to a great plan poorly executed, and I would suggest that this time we execute instead of treading waters we have in the past. As you tread water, you keep being washed downstream. And I really applaud the commission for the proactive stance that they've displayed so far and encourage you to keep going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Evening. Rick Shiel, I'm representing the Old House Guild of Sandusky. A question about items one, two, and three. As part of the vibrant city plan, at the very bottom of page 11, it says, "Repurpose vacant buildings. Target redevelopment efforts towards repurposing vacant buildings, including the upper floors of buildings that are only occupied on the first floors to create mixed-use office, residential, retail, and hospitality opportunities within the city, particularly downtown." Well, opportunities within the city encompasses the entire city. On item number three, we're going to talk about demolition of the American Cran Company. And Ms. Scrissler has some pictures for you. The Old House Guild supports the original owners, which was Born Again Salvage, who wanted to retain that building. It's an historic site. It's a unique brick that's on that building. The roof of the building is made of concrete. It's secured. The fire department, I believe, has temporarily mothballed the building. We're talking, the city's talking about a medical corridor in there. I can envision a dentist's office, doctor's office. If it isn't medical, certainly a community center. The South Central Group needs a place for meetings. Kids need a place to go after school. There's a million uses that building could serve while preserving the history of our area. So I'm going to encourage the commissioners to take a look at this when they put out the bids for demolition and look at salvaging that particular building. It doesn't have to be redone now, but to mothball it for future use. And if you haven't been there, I suggest taking a walk through. It's safe. We've been through it. We've had 75-year-old people in that building as part of the tour, so there was no health hazards in that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shiel. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission on any agenda items? Then we will turn to a presentation regarding the strategic plan and this pertains to, ultimately to item number two.
Will that presentation be voted first vote?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Graham, again here on behalf of Strategy Design Partners. Want to start off with thank yous to everyone who's involved in this process. Want to thank the commission for entrusting us to guide the public outreach and engagement for this process and help synthesize the themes and eventually working with staff to draft what you have before you today. I believe you have a longer document that you were presented with. I suspect that's been disseminated to the public as well. So I want to say that, you know, we're not going to take an exorbitant amount of time to present these slides to you today. I feel like, you know, we've presented this material to you at the State Theater in December. The longer form document is before you today. So we're going to briefly go through the slides and really, we've heard from the public. We've got the document before you. We'd like for you to have any conversation that you'd like to have, really what tonight is about. So, you know, I don't want you to feel like Bill Murray in Groundhog Day, like you've seen the same thing over and over again. Really, it's about what you have to say tonight, so. In terms of engagement, again, I'd just like to briefly state 2,000 people directly were engaged, spoke, commented online about what they'd like to see for the future Sandusky. So we feel very, I'll say we even feel proud about that as facilitators of this process in a city of roughly 25,000, 26,000 people. That's a great number. You should feel proud of that yourselves as well. The whole community should feel happy. You're engaged, you were heard, and hopefully people feel like their thoughts and their aspirations are reflected in this plan. Just real briefly, we keep harping on this, but I think it's important to note that there is a ground swell, a good feeling in this community that things are headed in the right direction. 77% of the people who answered that survey said they think that this city is headed in the right direction, and that's something to build upon. So on the plan itself, as you've read, roughly 35-page document based upon five overarching themes of a vibrant city, a livable city, a connected city, a destination city, and a celebrated city. I'll walk through those briefly with you here. Vibrant city is really focused on your economy. So I think it was James Carville who once said, "It's the economy, stupid," right? And that's 20 years ago, but it's still true here today. Jobs are paramount. Employment is paramount. What we heard again and again from the people of Sandusky are the economy is their number one priority. So this comes first in your report. This comes first in the plan. And as you can see in the document and here, real high level, regional, Sandusky is the regional leader of the Firelands region. It begins here, so, but we also understand on a macro level, cities are not kind of independent economies. It's really about a metropolitan region. So how can you partner with those municipalities and other communities nearby to really leverage your regional economy? Workforce is huge, so how do you have a skilled workforce? How do you develop and attract new talent? Workfor, so workforce is a major part of this as well. Mentioned here by one of your constituents in terms of vacant and blighted land and buildings. Obviously, that's hugely important. Not for me to comment upon implementation of this, but the policy that's recommended in the document is really, you do have great fabric here. You've got opportunities. How do you take that land that is either a drain on the economy or just lying fallow? And how do you really reengage it into contributing to your economy? And then I think most economists would agree that usually an economy is built not by landing some huge fish or, you know, some large employer. It's built on small businesses, entrepreneurs that grow over time. So how can we support that here locally? I think you've already got a strong culture of that, but building upon that moving forward. Livable city is really about your neighborhoods. And it's about building on a strength, I would say. The Thriving Communities Group recently did a study about housing, and although there were a few areas of concern, overall, your neighborhoods are strong. And I think that's something you need to, in this document, it's clear, build on your strength. This is a good place to live. It's no surprise that people are feeling good about the momentum because, you know, people are satisfied to live here. There are assets. There are amenities. The housing stock is good. There are targeted areas where you need to work on it. So that's the first bullet point here. Improve housing programs to maintain supply and stimulate demand. So how do you take care of the problem properties? Also saying, how do we encourage new buyers? How do we, when it makes sense, create new product? And make sure our housing is maintained, improved, and added to. But we also know that a neighborhood isn't just about a house, right? It's your neighbors. It's the assets nearby. It's your neighborhood church. It's your neighborhood school. It's your neighborhood library. So how do you improve those neighborhood amenities? Make sure that they're convenient, that they're accessible, they're walkable. How the people can find what they need for their everyday life in their neighborhood. And then, of course, safety, which is huge. So it's not just the house you live in. It's not just what's nearby. It's that you feel safe and secure as you are in your house, as you're walking through your neighborhood on your daily trips. So safety is also a large aspect of this plan.
Okay.
Speaking of connected, my remote's not working that great, but that's okay. It's not the last technology. It's bigger than that, of course. So connected city. Really, you know, Sandusky wants people to be connected into it and within it. So connecting it to the world and then connecting the people who are here to the things that they need to do, the assets and amenities they need to access. So we've talked a little bit about walking and biking in other places of the plan, but it's huge here, making sure that, you know, as people are embracing these things as important to them more and more, you know, automobile access is still important, but I think that the trend is that being pedestrian-friendly, cycle-friendly are important. So how do we achieve that? The plan has a number of strategies and tactics laid out regarding that. Public transit, Sandusky offers the only public transit in the county, really on its own. So how do you regionalize that? How do you make sure that it's fair? And how do you also, at the same time you're doing that, make sure that people have what they need in terms of getting to places, reaching employment? So that needs to be studied, and there's, again, strategies and tactics regarding public transit. Wayfinding, so you have a unique street grid here. You are a tourist destination. How do you make sure that people can easily find their way, get what they need, those who aren't as familiar with your unique street grid? Signage is important, but also, you know, traffic coordination and everything that goes along with wayfinding. Corridors, so strong, healthy corridors are essential. There are specific ones that are called out, such as Hayes and Cleveland. But how do you make sure your corridors are strong, that they have investment going on? And how do you leverage that investment along your corridors to create investment nearby as well? The plan also calls for a capital, a five-year capital plan, which I think is a great idea. I don't think you've done that before, so smart choice in looking at that and really being intentional about how you're going to use the public dollars over time and thinking that through. And then technology. So we know that in the past, connectivity meant something different than, you know, Wi-Fi, the internet, but in the 21st century, those are essential. So how do you improve that in terms of the public infrastructure here? And it's really an equalizing force. If you can have better connectivity, it's important to all. It's important to business. It's important to residents. It's important to students. We'll keep working on that. Destination city, so you have a number of great assets. One thing that is really fairly unique about this city is its status as a destination city, a tourist attraction on many levels. It's not just Cedar Point. You know, you founded this city within the Lake Erie Island chain, which is, you know, another destination for Ohio, for the Midwest, for the Great Lakes, number of other hospitality entities here. But how you, how do you build upon that? So you've got a core strength, but again, build on your strengths. So downtown is a focus, as well as your waterfront. We heard a lot about the waterfront. It's here. You're right there. You're right on top of it. I would say if you look around the Great Lakes, I've been to many of the cities, and we're from Cleveland, of course, and, you know, we've got almost a chasm between us and the lake. You've got a downtown that you're right there. I could, you know, step outside this building and you're right on top of it. So it's unique, and you need to build upon it more. People felt you have okay access, but it needs to be better. And I will say, I'll pause here briefly and say, this plan informs the comprehensive physical master plan as well. So these documents were built in conversation with each other. So keep that in mind as you look at this. Also recreation, indoor and outdoor recreation. And then another theme for the destination city is as you build these resources and amenities and attractions that will make people want to come and visit, you're also building capacity and quality of life amenities for the folks who already live here. So it doesn't have to be just something that's going to attract somebody from another community. It's something that both will be attracted to. And what we often find in, you know, the destination economy is that those things that are attractive to people who want to visit are also very valuable to those people who live in the community. So recreation and waterfront certainly is a good example of that, as well as arts and culture. So you have some strong arts and cultural amenities here. Building upon those, also building upon the arts and culture economy and even in the entrepreneurial and small business side. And then finally, celebrated city. So you have your bicentennial coming up. This is a unique time and opportunity for the city of Sandusky. And really, how do you build upon that? This is a five-year plan. Your bicentennial is roughly midpoint to that. So how do you take advantage of that? How do you use it to tell your story, to attract interest, to tell a new story about Sandusky, really? That's, we talked about destination and tourism, but there's more of the story here in Sandusky. You have a proud history and you have a bright future. So how do you get people interested? Use the bicentennial as, I don't want to say an excuse, but an opportunity to tell your story. So there's a number of strategies and tactics regarding that. So moving forward, next steps. Tonight, really, what tonight is about is, again, it's not about the consultants or the staff mainly. It's about what the commission has to say about this and what the public has to say about this. So I'm going to wrap it up here soon. So the conversation will happen tonight. Staff action planning has already really begun. We've done many, many interviews as this process was getting towards its sunset. We made sure to involve the staff heavily, and we've begun this process. I think it's really, it's going to be a handing of the baton now to city manager and also you in oversight and really establishing metrics and reporting out to say, okay, this is a great vision. Vision is a great thing. I believe there's a comment from one of our constituents here tonight about, you know, plans are great, visions are great, but how do you implement it? So we think this is a good plan. So I think if you implement it well, in five years, we'd love to come back and take a look around and see how much has been accomplished. So appreciate it. Open it up to you now if you have any questions for us, but really, it's
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I want to, I've done this perhaps privately on a couple of occasions and maybe semi-publicly through emails, but I want to, I want to extend my appreciation to, not just to you folks for the hard work that you put into this, but to staff and to the hundreds and even thousands of citizens that have played a role in developing this plan and bringing it forward. It really is a collaborative effort. This is not Dennis Murray's effort or any single commissioner's effort. This is an effort by our entire, by our entire city, our entire staff, and by you folks. And I know it's an enormous amount of work. I appreciate your effort on it. I think you've turned in a quality piece of work.
I'd like to echo that and expound on that. Mike in Virginia, you've done, I think, this community a tremendous service by taking all those different things that we heard during the course of the last all those different things that we heard during the course of the last six, seven months and compiling it into a document. I would have said, I've been sitting here two years ago, that undertaking a process to develop a strategic plan was a bunch of hooey. I, you know, one more study that sits on a shelf. But as we went through the process, and it was the process that has value as well as the final product, we had a chance to hear what people had to say. I didn't see a draft of this document until last week, so this is not something that the commission worked on. I didn't see the document until last week, I should say. So not something the commission worked on. And I just read the document. I was so excited as I read it. It really, it takes all that we heard and puts it together and synthesizes it in a comprehensive way. And government is, when it's done right, is not an accident. There's a whole lot of science to this, a whole lot more than I would have thought 10 years ago before I got involved in public service. And as I read through the document and understood your comments, I felt like maybe I could just keep up with Mr. Whoopsir a little bit more going forward in terms of his vision for the city and how to execute on this plan and the city that we want to become. So I want to extend my thanks for a job well done.
Any further comments? There'll be an opportunity to comment as well, of course, when we come up with the legislation, come to the legislation itself. The chairman will now entertain a motion to accept the communications from staff regarding the particular pieces of legislation.
So move.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing, no objection, the motion is approved. Mr. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes.
No.
Number one is second reading for an ordinance approving and adopting the bicentennial vision comprehensive plan for the city of Sandusky.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the second reading.
Has been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second discussion.
Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I'm going to vote yes for this, for the, for this document. I think the document, overall, is an excellent document. There seems to be some differences in the community in terms of how people interpret from it. So I think I should just first talk about what it is to me. I don't consider, what I don't consider to blueprint, I don't necessarily think that everything written in it is intended to be implemented just as shown. There are, there are parts of it that I feel that I'm very, very excited about getting started on doing, and there's parts that I think perhaps we may never do, but it's up to the community. It's, we're not building a city just for me, it's intended to be for the entire community. So I would hope going forward that folks step forward, and as Mrs. Johnson, many of the things she spoke to at the, before, at the audience participation portion are very, very things that we are going to have to look at. I believe that when this document was made, that they didn't, it seems pretty obvious, they didn't ask questions about why you can't do it. They said, these are, this is property that you have, these are the opportunities that you have, and going forward, if the community wants to do this, these are just some suggestions about what you can do. Retrieving volleyballs from the bay doesn't strike me as a great idea necessarily, but the idea of playing sand volleyball someplace on that property is really a good idea. Likewise, we do, we will end up with two amphitheaters if we were to take this document as written. So, and it wasn't discussed what we would do with the other one, so I think going forward, these are the things that we should ferret out as a community about what we like and what we want this place to look like five, seven, 10 years from now for our grandkids, children and our grandchildren.
Thank Mr. Poole, further comments?
Mr. Poole, I think that's exactly right, that there will be ample opportunities to debate the implementation of each of these phases. I do think it presents a very exciting vision for the city as a whole, and first, I hope we can see all of it executed. But as Mr. Pestah said when he was here with us, he said, this almost certainly will not be how it appears in the end. There will be changes that occur and additional opportunities that present themselves. So this is the start of a conversation, but I think on the whole, it is a great vision for a city.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted on second reading. Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance approving and adopting the bicentennial vision strategic plan for the city of Sandusky.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion? Or I should say, additional discussion beyond what we spoke to before.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Without belaboring, it was an excellent document, and the things that you've written in there are exactly what we want to do with our city in terms of a blueprint for the kind, the things that are necessary. And thank you for your work, you did a good job.
Further comment? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading. Item number three, please.
Item number three is a resolution accepting Resolution 16-001 of the Sandusky Building Code, Board of Appeals, and authorizing the building official of the city of Sandusky, Ohio, to take the necessary action to abate the nuisance by demolition located at 1706 Hayes Avenue pursuant to Section 1345.06b of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules and full courts of Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Has been a motion and second discussion? Mr. Hayberger, I wonder if you might be presenting this item, or I also note that Mr. Polis is present. Perhaps you could walk us through, and the public as well. I know you've provided us with a lot of the underlying documents as well, so we could see what the board considered. But I also understand that our role is a much narrower one. We are either to accept it or maybe perhaps reject it, but if we reject it, it would be with five votes. So could you present that, please?
That's correct. And just for the record, I do have a resolution here that's prepared if you do reject it, but as you spoke, it does take two-thirds. And the time crunch, the hearing that was held, that once it was appealed, was held last Wednesday, I believe. Was it Wednesday or Thursday? Wednesday. So there wasn't a lot of time to get everything ready for the package to go out on Thursday. So that's the reason why you just had the exception in there. There was a two-hour hearing held in this chambers on Wednesday, which the building code of Board of Appeals said on that matter. And just to give you a brief reference of folks that sit on there, without giving their names, you have a licensed mechanical engineer, you have a licensed practicing architect, plumbing contractor, an individual with degrees in mechanical engineering, a person with a business degree but runs a heating and conditioning business. So those were the judges, if you will, at that appeal here. Case was presented by George Polis, our building official, in which he felt that the building, including the parking lot, including the building that was discussed earlier today, and the fence, all were a nuisance, immediate nuisance, or I'm sorry, immediate danger for the public, in that they should be torn down. Obviously, that was the basis for the appeal. Out of that, testimony came forth that there was homeless people involved that lived in these buildings. There were juveniles, there's a police report of juveniles being arrested from this area. The area was not secure, there were holes in the fencing, there is, in fact, a gate that's open for normal business hours for the property to the media east, and if you get in through that gate, you can just, just matter walking to the left, walking to the west, and you're on that property. So it was insecure, and there were issues with the, that's just how to get to the building. And there was concrete stacked in the parking lot, which those slabs of concrete could provide, one, attractive nuisance for juveniles, and then, two, they possessed a huge danger for anyone playing on that or being involved with those. That's the reason for tearing up the parking lot. The buildings themselves, there is a 150-foot, I believe, stack that has a 15-foot crack down the middle that was visible from 50 yards out when this was posted, the pictures. There were structural issues with that stack, and that had the building with itself, and that building also had issues. The other building, including the administrative building, which is kind of referred to as the one with the orange brick, that building was attached to, is one common, let's consider one building, but the rest of the building. I do want to point out before we get going that, on the pictures that were shown today, there is a red X, if you look, from the exhibit that was painted out. Look at the middle picture, on the far right of the building, there's a red flag with a white X through it. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but that means essentially this building's so dangerous that this thing's on fire, we're not coming in, we're just standing outside and fighting from the outside, we're not coming in. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
And so then, the testimony turned to, I'm trying to speed it up here, later in the point, but the testimony then turned to, and you guys all had the, did this in the findings of fact, but there are trusses that were, had already failed, there were buildings, parts of the building that had already collapsed, that had not been cleaned up. There were just gaping holes that were not fortified in any way. These all caused the board to find that the building was an imminent danger to the public in order that George Polis, our building official, to abate the nuisance and have the matter demolished. Now, that was sent to you under the findings of fact and the decision, along with their resolution that said the same. So your act today is to either accept that resolution that was sent to you or reject it.
Thank you, Ms. Hayber. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
Mr. Shild mentioned, and this may be a question for Mr. Polis, about repurposing the building. Can you speak to, you know, the cost associated with something like that, and whether it's even worth trying to repurpose that building?
Anything can be repurposed, Ms. Twine. The issue with that building is not that it cannot be repurposed, it's how long we want to live with that situation. That building right now is attached to the factory portion, if you will, so it is encompassing, it's one building. We look at it from the building codes, one building, it's not separated by firewalls, et cetera. So we are dealing with it as it sits right now.
And it's more of a safety issue?
The cost to repurpose that building?
I'm sorry?
The cost to repurpose that building, I surely could not put a number on that, but it is, it is built very stout. It is a poured concrete, reinforced poured concrete, built similar to the way we are doing our hospitals. And the renovation of hospital work is running in excess of $200 per square foot.
Okay. And we're looking at primarily the safety of that building, the mention that our fire department won't go in there if there's a fire, and keeping homeless people and young people out of that building.
And to your point, if I may. The, the appealee, and appellee in this case, was born again salvage. Obviously, their intent was to tear it down too. Whether or not they intended to tear down what they were calling the administrative building or not, that's one thing, but their intent was to tear down the rest of it as well. But there was no plan to repurpose this apartment, as far as I know.
Thank you, Mr. Polis.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
Mr. Hayber, you provided us a document earlier today that I found very enlightening, and that shared with myself, anyway, the very limited scope that this commission has regarding this issue. That scope deals with whether we support our zoning code Board of Appeals decision, which was unanimous, by the way, to proceed with the demolition, or we reject that. And if we reject that, the basis of that rejection, I believe I'm paraphrasing here, is that we find the zoning code Board of Appeals had to act in a arbitrary and capricious manner. So our, our scope here is very narrow. We are not here to debate the quality of the structure or the worthiness of the structure to stand or to fall. Mr. Polis says, I think, has already determined that. So we're really, really pigeonholed in a very narrow, in a very narrow vein right now, are we not?
That's correct. You hit it nail right on the head. Just review the findings of fact and determine whether or not you accept those, you agree with those. If you don't, you'd have to find that they were unreasonable.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I had an opportunity to look at the police report, which indicated the kids were in there, also the pictures that were provided by the law department. And to me, I'm satisfied that the board's decision was appropriate. There's no way we can defend it, and the building is going to fall down, and there are places that it could fall down at any moment, on anybody that happens to be in there, whether homeless or not, or kids.
Further comments?
Mr. President, if I may, we've talked about the stuff that was handed out by the law department, just so the record's clear, that the things that were handed out were all the exhibits, and including the pictures that were presented, the PowerPoint that was presented, and the recording of the hearing. So that's what was given to the commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Can that, those additional documents be included in our record of this meeting? Since that's what we based that.
I think they should be, yes.
I think they should be, that's what we based, that's what the decision to support the appeals based on, for me, anyway.
Mrs. Cresser, we see, excuse me, Mrs. Cresser, will you see that those are appended to our agenda?
Yes, I will.
Or somehow find their way in our record tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good suggestion, Mr. Poole. Further questions or comments? Is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of the property owner? Mrs. Cresser, would you notice, note in the record that there is no one present? Any further questions or comments? Mr. Polis, anything further that you wish to add?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's obvious to me that this, the building presents a great danger in the judgment of qualified professionals, including the Board of Housing Appeals. I don't wish to second judge that, see no basis for doing so, so I will support this resolution as well. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners first on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Bellington, you are sort of like Godzilla on a rampage tonight. You've got three items of demolition on the agenda tonight, and we thank you for all the hard work that it takes to get to this point. I know there are a lot of other folks who worked with you, but I'm assuming that you will be presenting all three. So maybe if we could just have a general conversation about all three together and identify the differences. I think we would all appreciate that opportunity to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item that I have is in regard to entering into contract with Master Renovations Incorporated. The city requested bids for residential asbestos abatement and demolition on five properties. The properties are 329 May Street, 618 East Adams Street, 1006 Fourth Street, 1603 Carr Street, and 2242 Wilbert Street. In regards to all three, all of the properties, except for one, are vacant and blighted. Some of them are owned by the city, and some of them are privately owned. The one that, the property that is not currently vacant, we are only doing the garage portion. So if somebody occupies the residence, but we are only going to be demolishing the garage portion. So I am making some general comments on all three at this point. In regard to the specific communication, the city received bids from four contractors. Master Renovations was found to be the lowest at $49,500. Again, this is to complete asbestos abatement and demolition on five residential properties. This project will be funded with the FY 2015 CDBG funds, and we're requesting that this be passed under Section 14 in order to move forward with the project and alleviate the nuisance in the neighborhood. The second communication before you is in regard to receiving permission to bid out a project. This project will be for, again, residential asbestos abatement and demolition. This would be funded through the Community Development Capital Project Fund, which is Issue Eight funding. This bid would be for four residential properties. Three of them are city-owned, one of them is privately owned, which will just be for the garage. And for clarification, all properties that are privately owned throughout this process, we are putting tax liens, we'll be putting liens on their property to recoup our cost for the abatement and demolition. So we are requesting permission on the second and third communication to go out to bid. The difference between the two is that one will be using Issue Eight residential, or Issue Eight funds, and the third one will be using CDBG funds. So in general, the first communication is to enter into contract to demolish five properties. The second and third communications are requesting permission to bid out with two different funding sources, asbestos abatement and demolition on, two, three, seven properties total.
Thank you, Ms. Bellington.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any questions or comments regarding items generally? And then as we go through the individual pieces of legislation, of course, we'll have a second opportunity to discuss the particular items.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Ms. Bellington, I just want to thank you for all of the hard work that you and your team have done. It's wonderful how much you're cleaning up our city and making it safer for everyone.
Thank you. There's a lot of us together, so.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item number five is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Issue Eight residential demolition project number one, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number six.
Item number six is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed CDBG fiscal year 2015 residential demolition project number two, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Before we turn to the city manager's report, Mrs. Cresser, would you clarify for me? I'm just a little bit confused. We have on the paper form of the agenda, we don't have a rezoning request in a public hearing for that, but that's on the electronic version. Is that to be conducted this evening?
Yes. Mr. President, I actually changed that out on the internet, but I put it on the wrong date. It is supposed to be on the 28th of January.
Okay.
So it'll be on for next.
I got it. Okay.
Yes.
I did see that. Okay, I forgot. Thank you.
Uh huh.
All right, Mr. Whoopsir, floor is yours.
Sorry about that. I was clarifying one thing with the clerk.
Sure.
Which is always important to do. Okay, good evening, everybody. I want to just thank the commission for their vote tonight on the bicentennial vision, as well as the public for their participation in that process. Obviously, that's been a labor of love for everybody involved the last year. And I am most excited, I think, about beginning to detail and help assist with putting together the work plans and look to guidance to the commission for prioritization. We've already begun that, and just in that document that you read and heard the presentation from Strategy Design Partners, our scores of implementations, plans, programs, et cetera. And so what we've been doing internally already is to break that down to see who the appropriate point department would be for each of those, or if it would potentially be a committee or task force that includes private partners, et cetera. So just know that that work is already well underway. And as you stated with my own review, as we begin to develop that work plan, as I sit down over the next two months with each director to go over their work plan, we're already thinking and look forward to your feedback and really getting in front of you with what we intend to accomplish in the first year and then the following years, that five-year plan. So thank you again for your support tonight and your continued support as we begin that implementation process heading into the bicentennial. I also want to give an update on the law director search. I spoke at the previous meeting about the process for that. What we'll be doing is relatively soon, bringing together a committee. Commissioner Twine has agreed to serve on that committee as a commission representative. In addition to Commissioner Twine, I have asked Lynn Gast King, who is the current prosecutor within the law department, as a staff member to participate. And then two outside members, in addition to myself, Brad Wells, who is an attorney with Fireland's Regional Medical Center. We believe that he brings a unique perspective, being in-house counsel to a large, complex organization similar to a city. And then ultimately, Justin Harris, who is a partner with Reminger and Remisher, Reminger and downtown Sandusky, who has a lot of civil litigation experience. So we feel between Lynn and Justin, we have a really strong criminal and civil background. We think Brad brings to the table, you know, that in-house type experience, and we think it's a reflective group of the city. And so ultimately, we'll be gathering that group together next week to review a job description and set a timeline for the process. And I look forward to updating the commission and ultimately coming back to the commission with a recommended candidate at some point over the next two to three months. So thank you. In addition to that, I wanted to let you know that I have several of the appointments to boards and commissions per the city's charter or through codified ordinances are my appointments to make with the approval of the city commission. And so I wanted to brief you on where I'm at with these today. I'm not asking for your support for these recommendations today, but instead to brief you on the names, most of these are people who have asked to be reappointed to their existing seats. And ultimately, we can discuss over the next two weeks if you have any questions or ideas. And Kelly's been managing this process to a certain extent, and some of my questions were about this. So the Erie County Board of Health, Dr. Marcia Cooper, her term expired at the end of 2015. She is asked to be reappointed for a five-year term. She is very excited about the infant mortality work in particular. She's a Sandusky resident and a doctor. And so the current recommendation is that we would renew Dr. Cooper to another term on that board that would expire in December of 2020. We also have a vacancy, and I do not have a recommendation for the commission tonight on that vacancy, because I do need your feedback on this one. One of the many losses that the community feels with the death of George Mylander is that he was an active member of many civic boards, including your appointee or our appointee to the Erie County Public Health Department. We will have to, in short order, fill Mr. Mylander's vacancies, the vacancy created by Mr. Mylander's death. So if any commissioners have feedback on who they'd like to see appointed, that's obviously a very important position on a board that is jointly appointed by the city as well as Erie County. The Housing Appeals Board, and I believe each of these are folks who have expressed interest in having their current term renewed. That is Janice Warner, Dana Gamblin, and Frank Valley. So ultimately, unless another candidate presents themselves or alternatively the commission has ideas or concerns about any of those, I'll ask for approval to reappoint each of those. Finally, a new candidate, we had a vacancy on the income tax board of review. Carrie May, who is a local Sandusky resident, as well as a financial advisor in downtown Sandusky, has expressed some interest in potentially being appointed to that commission or to that board of review. And again, pending any feedback that I receive over the next two weeks, she'll be my recommendation. And then finally, and perhaps the most exciting, is the plumber examining board. And unless Kelly corrects me, I think these are all reappointments as well. Mark Dunn, John Leupold, John Zellner, and Dave Swander have expressed interest in being reappointed to that examining board. So again, I will formally ask for approval for either these or names that we come to an agreement on over the next two weeks. But please let me know if you have feedback for any of those specific positions. Thank you. So moving on to new and old business, starting with the police department. Officer Mark Gilliam worked his last shift on January 2nd, 2016. Officer Gilliam is retiring after serving 37 years in law enforcement, 26 years of full-time employment with the city. We want to thank Officer Gilliam for his many years of service. I know that Chief Orzek actually did the last ride with him last weekend. And it was not without any interesting events, as any last shift should be. I don't know if you want to say anything, Chief?
Thank you. Mr. President, I rode with Officer Gilliam on his last evening and got some feedback. And he went out how he wanted to go out. He worked all the way up to the last minute that he served the city. So we do appreciate, you know, his time and commitment for the city. And we shared that on Facebook, and he got quite a few comments from people that he's interacted with over the years. So we thank him for his service.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. My wife shared that with me, and it was really, it was very special. It was very impressive to see that outpouring of support for Officer Gilliam.
That's great. Moving on to the fire department. Chief Dagman traveled to the Horton Emergency Vehicle Factory in Columbus last week to view the construction progress in the recently purchased 2016 ambulance. The expected completion date is February 9th of this year. And so we hope to have it responding to the two emergencies in the city in less than a month. Chief, anything to add to that?
Just, it probably is, I'm sorry, going to be more towards the end of February. There was a little bit of pushback in orders, but everything is going fine. Should be run pretty quick in the city?
Great. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to finance, again, this is a reminder, that was on the last meeting, but until, we just want to remind that the water and sewer rates have increased with the pass bill. Information regarding the annual rate increases through 2021 are available on the website. So, and most importantly, I think probably a lot of people weren't listening at the last commission meeting because the weather was so nice, they probably never believed they would need it. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter months, we highly recommend that you contact the finance department to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which could lead to cost of repairs for the property owner. The customer accounting office number is 419-627-5893. Again, that's 419-627-5893. And then, moving on to public works. The Signal at Columbus and Parrish is operational as of Tuesday of last week. And the designs of the Caldwell and Fifth Street projects are being done in-house through the engineering department. Caldwell Street will be completed in two phases, but both streets will be completed this year. Moving on to American Crayon, which you discussed tonight. We did receive a total of six proposals or bids for demolition and abatement contractors for the removal of the former American Crayon facility. The city is currently reviewing those proposals and hopes to move forward with the contract award quickly. I want to thank Matt, Aaron, Trevor, everyone who's really been involved in that process. I know it's been a lot of work over the last few months, and we're doing everything that we can to push that important project forward this winter. Also, proposals are being accepted for a Phase Two environmental assessment of the former Thacker Aluminum at 1364 Old Street until January 19th at 3:00 p.m. And moving on, on January 7th, 2016, the city published annual notice in the Sandusky Register outlining revisions to solid waste disposal requirements. Any properties found to have trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse in the public right-of-way or boulevard outside the permitted times shall be declared a nuisance, and the city may cause said refuse to be immediately removed without further notice. If the city removes the nuisance, the cost of doing so, along with a $100 administrative fee, shall be assessed to the property owner. As a reminder, trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse or recyclables may be placed upon a curb for curbside collection no earlier than 6:00 p.m. in the evening prior to the scheduled collection of said materials. And any such materials or containers which remain after said collection shall be removed from said curb no later than 8:00 p.m. on the date of said collection. So this is a new policy for 2016. So we want to be very clear that the city, at the request of the commission, and with a lot of hard work from staff, et cetera, wants to make sure we're abating public nuisances like this as quickly as possible. We know that as people become more aware of this policy, that they'll be surprised, and there will be a lot of complaints. So we're trying to be as transparent as possible, and we'll keep pushing out this information. So the best defense is to make sure that you're taking care of your property. But we know there will be growing pains as we implement this policy, and certainly we'll probably all be hearing about it. So thank you for that. An update on public transit. In 2015, we saw an increase in on-time performance of Spark and Demand Response, even with major construction on two of the roads that are two of the busiest for our public transportation, Perkins Avenue, US 250. For 2016, we look to continue this improvement and grow ridership with the redesign of the Spark routes. Some highlights of how those routes might be designed are highlighted actually in the bicentennial vision. An additional retirement, Steve Ritson-Toller, an electrical building inspector within the building division, will be retiring on January 29th during Mr. Ritson-Toller's 32 years of service. He has served as an expert in this field and has served the city and the customers of the city admirably and professionally. And he was very active in the community. I know he's a prominent stakeholder at Sandusky Central Catholic Schools and other civic organizations. So he will be greatly missed, and we thank Mr. Ritson-Toller for his long time of service with the city. We also want to welcome Greg Cappasini as electrical inspector in the building division, effective today. Mr. Cappasini has been employed with the city for nine years, most recently in the electrical division of the Department of Public Services. So congratulations, Greg, as well as Steve, for their new opportunities. And then finally, staff from the Erie County Health Department has conveyed to my office, as well as Director Lasco's office, that since the city has begun more aggressively enforcing the housing code, their office has seen a consistent and steady decline in the number of nuisance calls that they receive. So they just wanted to urge us, to thank us and to urge us to continue that work. But they're seeing, so we're starting to see statistically, I think, that aggressiveness is paying off. And as we continue to stay aggressive, we think that that'll hopefully, you know, abate more of those nuisance, not only for the city itself, but for our partners who are in similar lines of work. And then finally, public service and recreation. Sandusky Recreation, represented by Victoria Kurt, will be at the AAA Great Vacations Travel Expo with Sandusky Main Street Association, January 22nd through the 24th, held at the Greater Columbus Convention Center. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Whoopsir, questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I'm not sure if it's here on the new business. I see on the website, we've got a link to YouTube. Can we get a conversation about what that means to the public and?
Yes, I was supposed to announce that tonight. I forgot. So.
I'm worried it'll be on YouTube.
In case, in case these scintillating meetings are missed by the members of the public at the ordinary times that is played on Buckeye Cable Division system, our meetings will now be placed on YouTube. And they, I don't know how you find them on YouTube, though.
Why don't we have them tell us? That's why I asked. Talk to us.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you to our IT staff for helping to get this up. Our meetings will be on YouTube. You can go to the city's website, citiesandusky.com, and click on a link there to access it. And each meeting will be uploaded the morning after. So this meeting will be up by 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. And simply click on the link, and you can listen to the meeting and, you know, scroll through it back and forth like anything else that you would watch on YouTube. And also, we changed the airtime for the meeting on Buckeye Cable to make them more consistent. So there will be a replay on the day of the meeting at 8:30. So Monday, the day after the meeting at 5:00 p.m., and then the following Monday at 8:30. after the meeting at five P.M., and then the following Monday at eight-thirty. So the, unless there's a fifth Monday in the month, there will be something airing every Monday at eight-thirty, and every Tuesday at five P.M.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Brady, you better be safe, because your grandchildren will be able to watch these on YouTube in years after you're long gone. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paul, for the question.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify something. Is this every Monday and every Tuesday? Is that what you meant?
Replay on cable?
Yeah, the replay, because the cable on the agenda just shows specific dates, which is simply three times a month, period.
Yes, but there, the day of, the day after, and the following Monday, so there's always going to be something, unless there's a fifth Monday.
Okay. Got it.
So the first, second, third, and fourth, there will always be something.
No, I'm still confused, but that's okay.
You can find it on YouTube, though.
Find it on YouTube, I'll be okay. Thank you.
So, further questions or comments for the City Manager?
Mr. Chairman?
It's Brady.
Mr. Whipser, I don't think this is a comment for you, but I would like to ask the Chief, on the Perkins Avenue, Chief Diggan, on the Perkins Avenue resignalization, it was my recollection that we had purchased an option for the Fire Department to be able to change the traffic lights to green to speed up, safety, safety services going through there. Is that op, are you aware of that option?
I know the option is always out there for that, and honestly, I have nobody's, none of my guys have told me about that yet, if they have it, but I can go through and check it. I haven't looked specifically. It's called an Opticon.
Yes, that's correct.
And what that does is if there's, you can't see the light flashing or whatever, transmitting, it's actually, transmits towards this little sensor, and it turns all the other lights red, except the direction.
Exactly, yes. We didn't pay a lot of money for that, it was such an interesting option, but I recall at the time, it was, seemed very reasonable to do, and I would think, I just want to make sure that we, that number one, that we, if we've bought that option, that we get the capability, that we have the capability to do that, and I would like to, from time to time, borrow it.
The Opticon for the...
[inaudible].
Further questions or comments for the City Manager? Thomas Whipser, and maybe Chief, or Mr. Link, you might remind us of what the snow emergency, I mean, we finally now have snow emergency routes that mean something, and we do have, the streets are all well-marked, and probably, I guess it's going to snow again a little bit, maybe a lot tonight. Mr. Link is shaking, I said, now he's had enough ice for the, for the last twenty-four hours. But if it does, I remember last year, we had, you know, we were presented with a number of pictures of cars parked right underneath the snow emergency sign with six inches of snow there, and it's like, you know, can't you read? But remind us of what the policy is. I think those folks get ticketed and towed eventually, and this is incredibly important in a community that has the largest hospital in the region, so that people can get to the hospital when they need it, so the police and fire, when they need to get to places, can travel those roads. These are not arbitrary roads, they're marked as snow emergency routes, but if you would remind us of what the policy is, and of course, it makes the job that much easier, the snowplow operators, to be able to get that road completely clean. What is the policy, Mr. Link?
Chief Orzak might be able to answer this better than me, but I believe that once there's two inches of snow on the ground, then you are required to move your vehicle, and I, off the top of my head, I don't know what the time requirement of that is, but I can find out and get back to you on that.
Chief, last year, you went through this process, and I think you ended up having to, you can end or tow quite a number of cars.
Yes, sir. Actually, if the snow exceeds two inches, we generally check with Mr. Link's gentlemen that are doing the plowing, and if they need the additional clearance, then we make an announcement, we generally, it generally goes out to the public. We can start ticketing the vehicles immediately. We generally will not tow a vehicle until the following day, which is a typical twenty-four-hour violation that we would enforce on a regular basis without snow. So we do give some time for folks to move their car if they forget about it or don't do it, but the following day, we'll start lining tow trucks up and start moving the cars. And so that's the process that we've had every year, and it makes for a lot safer, like you said, and a lot easier for the snow plows. Once they go through, the roads are clear, and everything's out of the way. It really does help out.
Thanks, Chief. Further questions or comments for the City Manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Since we're talking about routes, I brought up earlier, I've questioned some staff about the truck route. Recently, I had a resident tell me, we had a semi on Marlborough Street, and that is not, that doesn't fly in my world, that's a very narrow street. I am on, I live on McKinley, and that's supposed to be no truck route, but I know we're doing the East End, great separation, we're doing some work on the East End. Where's the truck route, and is that being enforced? I guess that, questions for the Chief.
Please, Chief.
Yeah, there's definitely not a truck route on McKinley or Marlborough, so we can discuss that later, get somebody out there. I'll talk to the project manager out there as well, and make sure that they're routing traffic in the appropriate direction. But, yeah, last year, when we were doing First Street, there were a lot of, because the detour was down Fifth, a lot of them were going down McKinley at that time as well. So we'll, we'll get on them about it if they are.
Further questions or comments for the City Manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Paul?
I want to go back to talk about snow removal. You're correct, it is important to keep the snow routes open to get the ambulances through, but I think, I hope we'll pay a little more attention this year to also the neighborhoods, because the ambulance does have to get to people's homes, and vehicles that sit three, four, five, six days with snow piled up on them become a hazard for trying to get through, and I appreciate that we didn't force that, deal with that also.
What is the, what is the rule, Mr. Paul, on the residential streets, in terms of moving a vehicle when it's been, after it's snowed?
I think essentially, there's not a rule about moving it due to snow, but you can park for twenty-four hours at a time, any place in the city.
I see, okay.
And so, it's a matter of, it just becomes a hazard when people leave their extra cars sitting on, on the street like that.
I guess they leave it, they leave a pretty clear marker, they've been there more than twenty-four hours.
Yeah, piled with snow, yeah, exactly.
And through the, through the Commission President to the Commissioner, just to Chief Orzak, is that generally enforced on a complaint-driven basis? Because oftentimes, there's so many residential streets in the city, unless someone knows there's a car that isn't moving, it's hard for us to know, and, but I don't know if there's another way that we ultimately determine whether it's time for a car to be towed.
Yeah, for the twenty-four hour, we'll mark it on a complaint-driven basis, and there's a lot of snow streets that we take priority over, and then generally, they're, last year, they, we had an exorbitant amount of snow, and it kept piling up, so we would have to get down to those streets, but generally, it's a complaint-driven basis if people are parked in the street. And then we always will run the plate and try to make contact if the, at the residents, if they're living in that area where, where the vehicles are at.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Further questions or comments for the City Manager? All right, then we will turn to old business, please. Anyone having items of old business? Anyone having items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
On Saturday, January twenty-third, at nine A.M., it's going to last an hour, I'm bringing back the coffee with the Commission, and the first guest is going to be our City Manager, Eric Whipser, and I also have Commissioners Brady, Wes Poole along with myself, and I hope in the future, I at least want to hold one, or possibly two, a month, that I can get the other Commissioners involved in this. I think it's important, it's a good way to vent or ask questions if you can't make this particular meeting, so.
I want to thank you for bringing that back, Mr. Waddington.
And Mr. Smith's coffee, Don Thompson.
Oh, Mr. Smith, okay. I want to thank you for bringing that back, and that was, that was a, I think it was mostly a lot of fun, frankly, when we did it those years ago together, and we had a lot of public input and opportunities for that over the course of the last year with the strategic plan and master planning, and I'd been thinking about, wondering about how it is that we could bring something like that back so we could have regular feedback, so I think that's great, and I appreciate your sending that out. Additional items of old, of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Also, working with you, I've had a discussion with you, we're going to bring back the City Business Roundtable in March, and then I'd like to hold that quarterly, and again, I think, I have to check with the Law Department, I would think any of the Commissioners that want to come, that would be important. Mr. Brady's also a business owner, and he's going to be at the first one. We want us to kick that off in March, hold them quarterly. I've talked to Mrs. Binnington and Mr. Lasko about this. I think it's important, we need, if we are going to go, and it looks like we've turned the corner, we need to keep contact, not only small business, but any business in community or the general area, because our employees do work on the other side of the Perkins Ave. Thank you.
As you will remember, Mr. Waddington, when we held those at the fire station, Center Fire Station, it was anticipated we would, I think, do that again, at that location. We had a lot of business participation, so that was very well received, so again, thank you for bringing that back. Other items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I need to make a motion for an executive session regarding pending litigation.
It's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a motion, second discussion? Mr. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. That executive session is set. Commissioners, I need to announce that we are setting a public hearing, I'm sorry, I need to request a motion to set a public hearing regarding a request to vacate a portion of the alley located west of Sycamore Line between the properties located at seven-twenty-three Garfield Avenue and five-fifteen Sycamore Line.
So move?
Second.
And a motion, second discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the hearing is set. Commissioners, you will also receive from Mrs. Cresser, consistent with the discussion that Mr. Whipser had during his remarks, a separate set of appointments to boards and commissions that are, generally speaking, made by the commission, sometimes with the, by the motion of the, of the President of the Commission, sometimes by motion of the manager, but it's a whole separate set of terms that are expiring. So you will receive by email a list of all of those who are continuing to serve, and where there have been folks who've applied to serve as well, the names of those who've applied to serve, and Mrs. Cresser could provide you with any further information, including the application to serve in that particular committee or, or board. Any other items of new business? Oh, one last item. Commissioners, as the President of the Commission, I need to make appointments to various liaisons to departments and liaisons to various boards and commissions, and with these, with these kind of things, not everyone's going to get their first pick, and not everyone's going to get exactly what they want, but Mrs. Cresser has, has prepared a form, which I'd like to pass out, and would appreciate it if you could give that some consideration and indicate your preferences to me, and I will do my best to make those appointments in an equitable fashion in light of everything that everyone has indicated they would like to, like to be involved with. And I want to ask your indulgence to go over some comments that I made two years ago, and I was going to do something different, but I, I thought it was really interesting to look back on this, and so I'm, I'm going to essentially give you a speech I gave two years ago. Some of you are just going to have to plug your ears, because you heard it before, but most, a lot of the staff hasn't heard this before, and a lot of the Commission hasn't. Let me just take you back two years ago. Elections bring opportunities for fresh starts. In particular, today marks an occasion for Sandusky to renew its relationship with our citizens, our businesses, and our neighbors. Each person in this room, and it's as true today as it was then, has a role in that, as elected representatives, as appointed officials and employees, as interested citizens, and as reporters and bloggers and commentators. Each has a role in shaping public debate, in impacting, in impacting our perception and reality as a place to do business, and attracting the economic development that our communities need to help position Sandusky and Erie County as places to raise a family, grow business, and live our individual dreams. And I want to renew the commitment I made to, to all of you, my fellow Commissioners, and to the community. To my colleagues at this table, I promise to hold the gavel, which you have entrusted me, with fairness and impartiality. If I sometimes miss a hand or mistake the order in which someone is asked to be recognized to speak, I ask for your understanding that it is not intended as a slight. I also promise to do more than to simply wait to turn my, my turn to speak, but to genuinely listen to you, and I ask that we all, as we have for the last two years, very successfully, listen to each other when we agree and when we disagree. Each of you is a duly-elected representative of our neighbors. Each has a right to be heard, and each has an obligation to try to understand the perspective of the others gathered around the table. To the city officials who attend these meetings, I promise as often as possible to provide you with notice of my concerns or questions in advance of the meeting. Too often, and this has not been true the last two years, but too often, commission meetings have been setups for department heads, leading to embarrassment or hesitation to answer fully. All of us who have served before, and this includes me, have made this error. That was counterproductive, leading to less discussion, less innovation, and less consensus. Naturally, that is a two-way street, and presentations need to be known in advance to allow for adequate, adequate consideration. One point that I would add this time around is, to staffers, I promise never to attempt to give you or even suggest orders. We have one and only one subordinate now, the City Manager. I will often request information from you so as to better do my job, but please never take that as an order. Only the commission, acting as a whole, at a lawfully, noticed meeting, can take action, and only then to pass legislation or to direct the City Manager. To my colleagues, to city employees, and city residents, I promise full preparation for the meetings. His materials are normally not terribly long or of unusual complexity. I hope that we never again witness what we saw just two years ago, Commissioners opening packets. I know we all get them by email now, but back then, we were still getting packets, and we, we witnessed Commissioners opening packets at the commission table. To the remarkable men and women who really do the job in Sandusky, the two-hundred, I guess we're up to two-hundred-and-fifteen now, Mr. Whipser, people who answer calls for emergency services, who plow the streets and beautify the parks, who provide the best water and wastewater services in Northern Ohio at prices that are still far lower than other governments. To you, I promise the respect and admiration that you earn and deserve. To our neighbors, both governments and citizens, I promise that if you contact me, I will respond. If you propose cooperation, I will listen and be actively engaged in the conversation. To our businesses and investors, I promise to do everything that I can to assure you that you receive a swift and clear answer. The answer can't always be yes, given our limited resources, but we will provide a timely and courteous response, and those who fail to do so will be held accountable. And again, that has not been a problem during the last two years. Finally, and most importantly, to our citizens, I promise to do my best to answer your questions as best I can, to foster a government attitude of transparency and accountability. I know that you will not always like the answers, but the facts, budgets, and past decisions are stubborn things that often constrain our choices. But each of our citizens are entitled to a swift and complete an answer as we can muster. In that vein, I plan to conduct a series of town halls, which we did, to discuss the city issues, the budget over the years, and our services, and to hear from our residents about the Sandusky that they wanted, about the Sandusky that they want, and we heard about that tonight in terms of our vision and our master plan. We've come a long way in two years. And I will say again, in closing, Sandusky is a city with great bones and legacy assets as well as liabilities. If we address both with equal honesty and enthusiasm, we can accomplish what few communities our size can even imagine. That is the last full, this is the last full commission elected before the Sandusky's 2018 Bicentennial. It is our job to serve as stewards, stewards of this community and prepare Sandusky for its third century. With your help, we will do just that, and I thought it was interesting to look back on my colleagues, with my colleagues who were here two years ago, at just how far we've come in two years. It's really been a great run, and to our new colleagues, welcome, and I hope we continue the progress over the next two years. two years. Unless there are further items of new business, we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any item related to the city, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your concerns.
Hello, hi, I'm Peter Gaetan. I'm an acting partner with Bornigan Salvager in regards to American Crayon Company. And I'd like to apologize to the commission. I honestly thought the meeting started at 6 o'clock, so I do apologize for being an hour late. But I want to address the commission and plead with the city of Sandusky to grant me the permit that I can follow through and tear down the rest of the complex. It has been stagnant for over a year now. I've been in litigation with my partner from Texas, Terry Hurt, and we have came to a settlement agreement where he's willing to turn over the property and the project over to me. And because of that being said, and this has only transpired basically over the last month and a half, two months. And I did make contempt, asked for the city's indulgence and to grant me a permit to do it, but when I was in common plea court, I was told I would only be granted a 45-day permit for demolition, which there's no way I could do it within that timeframe without creating a public endangerment. And we have invested quite a bit of money into this project. We bought it through bankruptcy court because of Joe Yost. And we, what we, my company, Architectural Deconstruction, is a demolition company that I own, we have a great success in recycling. We recycle anywhere from 90% to 99% of our projects. My most notable project that I've done in recent years was in Fort Wayne, where I did the old wagon wheel works. That was 147,000 square foot building that we recycled, over 99% of the project. And my background is, I'm 59 years old, I've been in the demolition industry for over 28 years. I started out as a vice president for one of the largest demolition firms in the country, which had five national offices, over 650 employees out in the field. And we do quite a bit of work for union houses, even though we're not union, but we do specialty work. All our demolition is controlled demolition. And by what I mean is, we just don't rip and tear, whatever, how the walls fall, they fall. We control all our faults. And we do a very good job. Most cities nowadays are mandating 50% to 75% recycling. We're going to achieve over 85% on this project. But most importantly is, we have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into this project. We have done over $200,000 in sales receipts at this point, but we still have a couple hundred thousand dollars still tied up into the property that we haven't recovered yet. And I'm looking for a demolition permit of six months, and I will clean the site up to the city's satisfaction. And I really don't feel the building is a public endangerment as it has been suggested. I've had a masonry contractor out there, I've also had another demolition contractor, and I have measured the squareness of the building and such. And it is not a public endangerment, in my opinion. And I welcome any city official to meet me out there to take a look at the project and such. And I just really plead, you know, that we came in to save the city some money and also for an opportunity to make some money as well. It's our intention to redevelop the property and such. And we would like to make requests and save one building, and that's administration building, because that is one of the first precast buildings to be built in the country. It's all the walls, the floors, the roof, it's all span concrete, and it's built like a bombshell. And so, we like to, once those historic elements are gone from a city, they're gone, they're never going to come back. And I think American Crayon has contributed quite a bit to the city of Sandusky. It's the oldest crayon company in the world, it's 40 years older than American, and then Crayola Crayon. But it has a lot of architectural significance as well, and we would develop that building into the architectural plans that we have for the site. And I would like, basically, maybe we'll save what we have invested and such. And that's basically what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gaetan. You understand that we've already voted this evening, and that is to accept the recommendation of the board. And unless someone either now or at a future meeting makes a motion to reconsider that, that is the decision of the commission.
May I add something else?
Please.
We have no building violations, previous building violations on that property, except for high grass, which we complied to right away. And I think it's extremely unfair that it can step in right away and without any previous history of building violations on our watch and such. And we have invested heavily into this project, and I really think it's unfair that it can be taken away like this without having the city out there. I have made several requests for city officials to come out and point out the areas that are troublesome, and nobody has yet to come out.
Mr. Gaetan, I'm sorry this has not worked out for you, but I will say that, I will note that it has been many months and months and months that we have been waiting for action. And I understand that you and your business partner had falling out, or there were some issues that may have interfered with that, but in the meantime, the building deteriorated further. That was the evidence that was presented to the board, and we've accepted their recommendation. I thank you for being here, but it appears as though the commission, the decision of the commission is standing. So, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Paul.
I have some question, Mr. Gaetan. Sir?
Yes, sir.
When was the last time, when did you buy the property?
Back in June of 2012.
Okay, and when's the last time you folks were doing any work on it?
It's been about September of 2014.
Okay, so you recognize there's been a year and four months gap where you've done nothing. Where was this plan that you're talking about that you could have, why wasn't that executed? Why have you not already taken the building down and moved and done what you wanted to do?
Because the judge has ordered us not to perform any more work regarding demolition on site.
How much communication with our staff have you had regarding your problems and so forth? And do we have a copy of this plan that you have that indicates you can do this?
I have submitted a demolition application that has my schedule of what I would do in the first 30 days, 60, 90 days, and so forth.
When did you submit that?
I submitted that last Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
I'm Rick Sheel, Old House Skills, Sandusky, Ohio. I'm going to, what's going to be the cost of demolition to the city?
The bids are out, we don't, I don't know what those...
700,000, 800,000?
Do not, I do not.
And who's going to pay for that?
It's been a matter of public record, it comes out of the EMS fund.
Okay, the EMS fund, that's a tax, right? So, that's city...
No, that's not correct, actually.
Well, how would you describe it then, sir?
Mr. Sheel, you know it's not taxed. Proceed, please.
It's money from the citizens, money that could be spent somewhere else. We could hire some firefighters, we could hire an extra police officer. We have somebody here, now maybe he's behind the eight ball, maybe he isn't, I don't know. But don't you think it'd be worthwhile to sit down with him, see what he's got to offer? If he can save the city 700, 800,000 dollars, develop the property in a certain length of time, doesn't it make more sense to have him do it? We just had this comprehensive plan that we spent a lot of money on. One of them was to support small business, we have a small businessman here. Also, another point was to save our older buildings. And I attended many of the programs that were offered and put in, put in, and I heard it over and over again, stop tearing down your historic buildings. So, now we have two points here, and we have a gentleman who wants to complete his project. Don't you think it'd be worthwhile to give him 24 hours, two weeks, whatever it takes, sit down, talk to him, see what's available, see what happened, and maybe we can come to an agreement where he completes his project and it doesn't cost the city anything? I'm going to ask you, as the president of the commission, to think about this and maybe move us in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Sheel.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
We've already voted on this, and certainly the authorization to move forward is there. I would like to have a response from staff, to me anyway, on his request for the demolition permit, like why we should not allow it. I mean, it doesn't change the vote we've already taken, but I'm interested.
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Haver.
It's my understanding that Mr. Poole has just received that report this morning, he's still reviewing.
Not a problem, I just like, when he's done with it, I'd like to hear, and since it's in the hands of the manager, he can decide whether he wants to wait a couple minutes or not, I would think. Does that not make sense? It's in his hands at this point.
I think, well...
And he can do whichever, but the fact is, we have some new information here that staff is looking at, and we've given you the authorization, do what you think is best.
I think that at this point, given the order that has been sustained by the board and which was accepted by the commission, certainly Mr. Whoopser would have the latitude to come back to the commission and request an emergency meeting to change our decision, but absent that, he would not have the discretion not to proceed with the demolition, I believe.
Okay, you're correct. I didn't mean permanently, I meant exactly what you're talking about. He still has a moment to think about this, whether it's a good idea, after we've reviewed all the information.
I think that's true.
And I note that this is late to the game, this new information. There's been obviously a long period of time in which Mr. Gaetan could have communicated with us that his intentions and what he intended to do, so...
Okay, all right.
Are we bidding process?
Let's close.
The bids have already gone out?
Bids have gone out. The question raised at the table is, would Mr. Gaetan be part of the bidding process? But the bids have already gone out and been accepted, and I don't think we have the latitude to rebid without potentially getting litigation with some of the bidders.
I don't think it'd be a wise choice for us to pay him to tear down his own building either.
Yeah, it's true.
May I say anything additional?
Go ahead, sir.
Then I'd like to point out, outside of all the money I've invested, if I'm not granted the demolition permit and the city's going to lean the property and charge my LLC, I'm going to have to go into bankruptcy because I won't be able to absorb that expense. My cost is significantly cheaper than what has gone through the bid process, but primarily is, I came in here with good intentions, thinking we're going to do something great for the city. And I've invested heavily into the city of Sandusky, but not being able to have the city come out and to point out and to show me what's wrong with the building, because I do dispute it. And I would like to have the opportunity to prove that it's not a public endangerment which has been casted. It's not. There's no walls leaning out, there's no walls bowing out as well. And I will stand behind what I'm saying. But the thing is, we have been paying taxes on that property, and I have made several requests for the city to come out and point out to me what the problem areas are. They have not came out to point out those areas. You want to talk about, I don't want to throw out accusations or anything like this, but really, pretty much, is Sandusky the city to do business with? I mean, we've been paying taxes, we deserve the right for the city officials to come out there and tell us what's, improve and show what's wrong with the building and study telling the public and misleading them. And we have the right, and I feel I do have the right, since we have paid taxes and you can take our property away from us, and we haven't even had a public hearing. We haven't even had, gone through any type of legal or any type of process, whatever, I get a letter and say, hey, we're going to take your property. And that's it. I mean, where's the due process in the whole thing that I get to prove and argue and show that you're wrong?
Mr. Gaetan, but to correct the record, and we're going to terminate this conversation at this point, there was a public hearing, you did have a hearing, you had an opportunity to present your case, and you did. And there was evidence presented that this poses a present and imminent danger to the public, so I...
There has been no proof on that.
You disagree, and I understand, so...
Okay, can you tell me what the proof was?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We will, unless there are other members of the public wishing to address the commission, we will take a brief recess followed by the executive session.